Hey Doug. Doug. Doug.
Mr. Foe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not trying to interrupt the conversation.
Well.
Finance should go quick.
All right. All right, calling. Besire City Joint Regular Committee Meeting to Order. Members present, myself, Mark McGee, Kevin Myers, James Mead, Aaron Sherrick, and Doug Foe. Okay, Besire's City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. Could have any public participation. Okay. All right. Order of Committee Business. Finance, calling Finance to Order at 6:02 PM. All right. We have various appropriations and transfers, and so we need to bring the floor to Joyce.
I do need one other thing, I need an official referral to create our two grant funds for our victim advocate. Fund 285, 2021 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance, and Fund 286, the 2021 Victims of Crime Act. So we'll need, I also have appropriations for these, so we'll need to create these funds before we do appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve to create these funds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. There you go, Joyce.
Okay, thank you. So, we started out with the appropriations for Fund 285, the 2021 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance. We're not exactly sure what our funding's gonna be. There's indications we're going to get it, but it's gonna be cut this year. So, I'm only appropriating $8,000 for the victim advocate, personal services. This is to cover the first quarter of the grant, which starts October the first. And then in Fund 286, the 2021 Victims of Crime Act, we have the same scenario there, so I'm appropriating $5,000 to the victim advocate, personal services, for the first quarter, starting October the first. Then in Fund 3, or 835 Drug Law Enforcement, we've received drug fines in the last week, and it's actually a little higher than what I had indicated in my referral, because we received another $625 in drug fines yesterday. So I'd like to appropriate $3,750, which is the total of those drug fines, into the Police Department Materials and Supplies category within that fund.
Did anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd love to move to approve these three appropriations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. King Joyce?
Hey, that's all the appropriations. Moving on to transfers, there has been a donation received to the Police Department for the K-9 program. This just came in also in the last week or so. And since I'm holding down appropriations, I'd like to do a transfer in lieu of an additional appropriation. So I'd like to transfer to Program 1, Security of Persons and Property, to the Police Department, capital outlay, $1,500. And that'll be transferred from Program 6, General Government, that should be 7, I'm sorry. In General Government, Contractual Services, reducing that line by $1,500.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd love to move to approve the transfer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Chair, just to confirm, these three pieces are emergency legislation, being that they are financial.
Keep forgetting that.
You'd like to amend?
I'll amend, I'd like to go back and amend all, both of them, or all three of mine. My motions to be emergency legislation, my apologies.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
That's all I have for this.
Okay.
Any other questions while I'm here?
As of right now, how is our finances looking?
We're holding our own, like I say, I'm always concerned about the general fund, which is why I'm not doing additional appropriations, because we're trying to keep expenses down as much as possible. I'm also working on our reimbursements to the funds that have expended money for the COVID-19. I started working on that today, so that I can go in and reverse those expenses and charge it to our relief fund. So, I should have that done next week.
Okay. All right. There's no other discussion, I will adjourn at 6:07 PM.
Doug, before you start, we were gonna real quickly, if you don't mind, move Health and Safety up, because we had asked the... Oh. You were looking like you were getting ready to speak.
No, he was enjoying the last.
Aaron, with your permission, I'd like to move Health and Safety up, since we have the chiefs here. How do we can get that taken care of? You all right with that?
Get them up.
All right, I'm gonna call Health and Safety Order at 6:07 PM. On the agenda, you see sidewalk maintenance and repair, that's gonna go to Plating rather than Health and Safety. But not on the agenda is the discussion where we had invited representative from the Civil Service Commission, as well as the chiefs here, to discuss what we brought two weeks ago, which was keeping an active and current civil service list to hire from. Mr. McBride, did he answer to the request to be here, Mr. Hill?
I did not reach, I did not contact Mr. McBride.
Okay. Chiefs?
I'll come up so I can talk to you guys a little better here.
Any input from you regarding the discussions we've had about trying to keep an active list in the event that we need to hire without going through the lengthy process of putting a list together?
Right, well, I don't know that it's that lengthy of a process, I believe we just require a letter from the Service Director to the Civil Service Commission to start the entry-level test. Once they do the entry-level test, the testing is done. We've got our list, and then from there, we can move on to the physical fitness testing and interview.
In your experience, what's the length of time from then, you know, if you had four officers either get injured, or quit, or whatever, today? What's the length of time until you have a list that you can hire from?
To have the list, or actually get somebody hired?
Well. Both, but the topic we're looking at here is just to be, have that list of somebody you can make an offer to.
Probably anywhere from 60 to 90 days, I would think.
I mean.
I mean, it's, it's, it's lengthy, it's a couple months.
Yeah.
By the time you do background checks and physical testing and everything else, I mean, it's over five. I mean, if we, if we had an eligible list today, we'd probably be close to the end of the year before we can hire anyone.
Anyone that was already on the list.
Correct.
Okay.
So now I think they have to advertise for so long, they, well, the national testing, I've only, I've never gone through it as an administrator. But I think once they do the national testing, then we get the list, they, those for a certain number of days, correct?
Well, I didn't stay as active until we tell them not to.
Okay.
It's so much a year. The reason, the reasons came up was exactly the scenario described, that, you know, it's not something that we anticipate or expect to happen, or want to happen. I think we just wanna try to be prepared in the event something catastrophic does happen, whether it's an accident, you know, that involves injury or death of multiple members of either department, or
Sure.
a mass exit, you know, somebody else is hiring at twice the pay rate, and they all said, see ya. Whatever the case may be, my concern is, I just wanna make sure that we're putting our best foot forward to be able to recover from that, you know, in time of manner.
You're, you're looking at several months before anybody's gonna be, they're gonna be brought in.
So, is having an active list at all time, in your opinion, something that we should be looking at that could be useful, or is it not gonna help much?
The only thing about having the active list all the time is if we have no vacancies, and we go two years without hiring anybody, then we've spent $1,400 for
Correct.
for nothing, you know? You know, I know, I could, I've talked to the mayor and the Service Director here. You know, this is, I think, the first civil service meeting that we've been able, since I've been chief, to get a entry-level test on there. I believe letters long on Tuesday here. So, I don't... It's up, it's up in there, and I almost defer to them as far as the money goes, but I know we don't have a lot of money right now to be
Yeah, and that's not my intent to spend wastefully, wastefully either. It's more like an insurance policy in my mind, that, you know, hopefully you ever need it.
Correct. You know, the only other thing is on the national testing, if we're not hiring anybody, if we have no vacancies, then nobody's gonna submit their application to us. You see what I mean?
I do, yeah.
Maybe some people will, but I mean, it's
That's why I wanted you guys here, to get your input as well, to see.
Because I believe when the applicant registers for the national test, they can pick a couple different agencies that they want their resume or application to go to, or their test scores to go to, and if we're not hiring anybody, we're not gonna get any of those people.
So they just can't select to ship it to us, in the event we do have an opening?
I think they can pick like five.
Okay, so, and they're looking for, God, they're gonna look for five openings?
Correct, then they have to pay more money than to send it to multiple, more people than that.
So the only one you're really gonna get is the person who grew up here, who really wants to have a job here when one comes available?
Correct. That's hoping that they
Right.
hoping that, you know, when they get out of the academy, that they're able to come here. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, and I think it's a great idea to have an active list, but at the same time, I don't know if we're gonna have any applicants on it if we're not hiring.
Yeah, your points are well taken, and that's why we wanted to explore.
Sure, thanks, question, what happens if you have a somebody that's maybe grew up here, and has graduated from the academy at a certain time, but you've already got a list that you have to pick from? Is that, that would preclude that person from being, don't we have to go through that list first and exhaust that list? That next person who you really want, has to wait till the next go-around, am I right there, or?
I think that'd be a better question for civil service there, because I'm not 100% sure how that works through the national testing. Okay, I know, I can, I don't know if we have an open list all the time, if that means that we never have the list that's expired, because I know they normally certify a list for two years.
Right, I think there are batches of 10, if I remember correctly.
Because then you have to set, exhaust that entire list before you get the next 10 names.
So watch into those 10 people, then.
Until you're, until you're the one you want is
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I think your question you're asking is actually even the worst deal for what we, I hadn't thought of that aspect.
Yeah.
You know, if you're the guy who just graduated academy, and we just put the test on six months ago, you're waiting another year and a half
Yeah, two years.
until you can get on the next list, I hadn't thought about that prospect either. And we may lose that person during that time.
Mike Graves.
Point taken. Huh?
Mike Graves.
Yeah, point, point taken on that as well.
I believe you mean, no, Mike is a, or, yeah, no, sorry, yeah. But I mean, it's
It's something to consider.
No, I mean, I think that if someone's in the academy now, they can take the test, but they're not gonna get the bonus points if you haven't already scored.
Yeah, so they wouldn't score, where you, where you expected them to score?
Well, they've only had, or had seven or eight applicants in the last few tests anyway, so he'd be in the top 10 if he put his name in.
And I'm, I'm gonna say the same thing, that there's a potential of the person not getting their, their bonus points or whatever, that we will normally allow them to take the test, you know, they're allowed to take the test without certification, but when it comes to their, their scoring in that top 10 or whatever, that it could potentially have somebody down lower, just because they don't have the certification at that time of the test. So, I do swear that can be a hindrance also. You know, our main thing is that we, you know, both the chiefs and I are really looking forward to try to work with the administration on that, you know, if we know we've got somebody going to retire and come up that, you know, that we'll, we'll get a, get a list on, and I know that this, this last earlier this spring here was, everybody was, you know, kind of a hotbed era between each other, so, you know.
Hey, I'm gonna hold you going on the record and say, I thought I had a great idea, that here on the other side, but wasn't really a great idea at all.
So, it's one of those, we, we, you know, we like the idea for, for potential, but it's also, there are, there are drawbacks to it also.
Well, I'm glad we had the discussion, because I didn't see that, that side of it, so I'm ready to call it case closed, if you guys are. Unless anybody has any other questions.
So, but yeah, we appreciate your, your help and thought, that if we would need, need help with, with it now in the future, that we can come to you and say, hey, we can force this, potentially force this issue.
Yeah, and, Rob, is there, I think we, I asked you this question once before, and I don't remember if I got the right answer from you, or if you were able to answer me, but something catastrophic does happen, we can declare an emergency and hire outside the civil service list, but then those people would have to take the test and pass it, and be in that first group of 10.
Yes, there are provisions for emergency hires
Okay.
in extenuating circumstances.
All right.
All right.
Thank you both for your time.
Okay, sure. I guess, I was gonna say, any other questions for us while we're here, that, I know we both haven't been here for, for a while, so anything?
Any ones?
Keep up the great work.
Thank you, we'll do our best.
If you have a question.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, I will close out, Health and Safety at 6:17 PM.
All right, I'd like to call Public Lands and Building Committee to Order at 6:18 PM. It's actually 6:17. Quick question, I should leave, mention what they wanted us to do the other night for places out there. Yeah, we're just gonna take that off, complete it, we're not stable enough.
Bring that up if you want, but if you want the
Right, I just, I just know that that was something that some of the people in the system were waiting to hear about.
Maybe asking if they have any, if they wanna say anything.
Does anybody else have anything that they wanna say about the apartments going out by Brentwood? Or not?
I don't know, if there's anybody behind me, I think we pretty well thought the other night, but I didn't ask them.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hill Crest Drive. The only thing I have to say is, I know at the last committee meeting, and our last council meeting, the residents had asked of the committee members and council members if the area where this proposed apartment complex was being looked at to be placed, was zoned for apartment use. And nobody was able to answer the question, or did not answer the question. I have checked the zoning map on the city's website that was prepared on November 1, 2016, by our former zoning administrator, Mr. Rostash, and it is showing that the proposed area is currently zoned R1, which is suburban residential, and is not zoned AR, which is apartment residential. Thank you.
My name's Greg White, I live at 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I'm not talking, since this is Public Lands and Building. One of the things I still wanna bring up, not about that issue, but about a barricade going across Friendship Lane. Some of the residents have brought this up in the last two meetings, okay, about stopping the late PM and early AM visitors to the Friendship Bridge at all hours of the night. Many residents have brought this up in the last two meetings. I would like to see something done. Bring it up as a first reading or whatever, and follow the proper committee order. To see about putting two poles in, wire with the yellow pipe like they did at the other entrance down there, and shut that off and put signs up that says closed. The only people that need to be back there is wastewater treatment plant, if they need to go back there. Nobody else needs to go back there. The park's supposed to be closed at dusk. That should be closed at dusk. From what I understand, Friendship Lane is not a dedicated street yet. Correct?
Actually, it is.
It is now?
Yeah, it is.
We had to do that to give it, we had to name it so that we could pave it.
But, I think it needs to be closed off. I think if we're going to deter certain activities that are going on back there, I think that's what needs to be brought up and discussed tonight, and go to the proper change command. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
While I don't sit in the committee, I do wanna make a point, I believe, Mr. White, but I'm gonna verify the administration, isn't that just something that you guys can do without, council doesn't need to get involved in that? You have the ability to put up whatever barricades or whatever you see fit.
They would have to go through Traffic Commission.
Okay. Because it's up the street now? Okay. So it has to go to the Traffic Commission before it could come to council?
You're talking about down by the Friendship Bridge?
No, I'm talking about where the old service road is, that used to go around, and it has two concrete barriers pressed up. I'm talking about putting cable across there with two poles, so to stop people to go back to the bridge.
And you don't think they would just drive around with that cable?
Well, you know what, hook and rope. You know, they did it, they, they were driving around, the other one anyway, down the lane, there's been tracks going down the lane from people who drive their vehicles down the bike path. You know? Let's put some barricades up, let's close that off, let's deter the certain activity that goes on down there at night and early. I think, I think it's turned, did they drive around it? Then you know what, they get stuck.
I look like Keith Cast, very brief. I thought we were about to talk about the apartments, and I've been supportive, Mr. White, when we were doing the loaders support. The matter Mr. White brings up was brought up by several people around that area, the lane traffic going back there and so on. I'm not sure how far you're making this street extend, if it's gonna be a street clear back to the Walk Bridge, or just where the intersection meets, but I think you do need to take a serious look at closing that somewhere, and for your Traffic Commission, with my pass, people driving around it, you can take care of that easily, proper marking, they drive around it, your police department can now enforce it for closed roadway. But, Mr. White does have a valid point, and it's just not a couple, there were several talking about the traffic going back there late at night, he says, comes back out. It does need to be looked into.
There might be a way I can donate a camera back there, and have it tied into the Police Department, so they can watch it live, and if they got, if they see somebody back there, they'd be able to dispatch a officer out to catch them. So, I'll, I'll look into that, come back here in the next meeting or something, proposal.
Quick question.
Yeah.
And I, and I know, please don't take me as being a smirk button when I ask this, but being that people are catching these people going down there, my fault was, when I heard this brought up a couple times here over the last couple weeks, is, you know, I love to protect my neighborhood, that's why I love the neighborhood I live in, we all watch out for one another, very similar to your guys' neighborhood. I was just curious, does anybody own a spotlight by chance, that when these people are going down there, you can spotlight them the whole time? Because from what I understand, the people with drug activity, if they are noticed and seen, they tend to run and hide, so I guess it's just a question.
I'll be honest with the distance there, it would be hard to spot them.
Okay.
Because they're going pretty back to the parking area, the Walk Bridge.
And then, you know, when you turn, just before the bridge, you turn to the left where that rock is?
Yes, sir.
They actually go down, belong behind the rock where they're hidden.
Okay.
There's, I think you may, so many people travel, because it also happens at the cemetery too, but the cemetery is private property.
Right, right.
So, but we're talking about the people that go back there all hours of the night to the bridge, they shouldn't be back there.
Well, that's a kinda obvious, if you're back there at that time, then.
And, and I'll be honest, and I hate going old stuff, I don't know when it exactly occurred, if we'd had, if there had been poles or posts there, would have probably prevented a young man from driving his car into your bridge, but but there's, there's a couple avenues that you could look at protecting the bridge with, like we did, the sheriff's office with steel poles, concrete loaded, so that they can't drive through, but where you're taking your trucks and stuff, the only way you're gonna do it is with a set of posts and a cable or chain, with signs attached, that when it's, and when it's across, it's closed, and it's a closed roadway, something on that order.
Whatever you want to put, I'd do that to camera.
Okay, so what actually brought that up was, if we could make a vote, that that won't even be, that area won't be brought up again for building at this point in time, that we're taking that off the table for this project, because that was what they requested the other night for us to talk about while we're here?
I can speak to that, you don't need to worry about taking it off for the project, because as I just explained to Mr. Caster before our meeting this evening, our, the investor, that's a potential investor to build this, after finding out it's a super fund site, and still labeled as a super fund site, does not want to build there now.
So does that make everybody
But, but I guess, we'd like to try to approach it, maybe with a vote that, that brings this unto an end, and maybe any potential future people may wanna invest and do it back there or something. I don't know how, how you can do it, I'm just kinda putting it out there, that I think with what we know about the property now, if there's a way to do it, bring this unto an end, and just keep it from being something that can, is gonna come back up five or eight years from now, or whatever.
So, Mr. Ridge's point though, the other night, I guess if we do do that, if we take that route, say it's no longer, is that going to prevent us from expanding our wastewater treatment plant if we need to?
No, because if you make, as a resolution, that no residential apartment dwellings or anything like that, but anything that is owned by the city to expand will be allowed to.
Mr. Law Director?
Speak. You'd have to pass an ordinance and prohibit development there. That's not, that subject has not been referred to committee, but, you know, it's an open committee, so you'd have to pass an ordinance and take it to council.
Is that gonna restrict us, though?
Because of the language of your ordinance, as, as a general rule, we're not held to our, to some of the same requirements of an ordinance that we would pass, like any other ordinance, it would be subject to being repealed.
And, and I'll be honest, I think the general feeling I got from the people, but I don't have the crystal ball, I don't think any of the neighbors out there expect you to expand, that you're gonna expand your sewer plant or it's coming through behind Brentwood. That really wasn't a matter that came up, I think the biggest fear is that some developer's gonna look at wanting to buy it, use it or whatever, to, to build residential back there, right up against, behind everybody, or whatever apartment. The matter of the sewer plant growing to that size was not even an issue ever it came up.
Because Mr. Ridge brought up, that's why I brought it up.
I know what, yeah, he brought up all that wood, and I was gonna try going, he still has me confused, which wood he's talking about, I just need to find out.
Okay, Kevin?
Rob, would that be something that, you could just simply pass a resolution stating that that property can never be sold?
You'd have to pass an ordinance.
An ordinance to say that that property can never be sold, would that leave it available for if we needed to expand in the future, but not to sell it to anyone else for any development? Is that, is that a fix, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, you could pass an ordinance that restricts the sale of that, that piece of property, it wouldn't restrict the lease of that property, it's like a 99-year lease. Or you, you could pass an ordinance that restricts the transfer of that, that, but any of those ordinances would be subject to being repealed, as easily as they can be passed, so.
I, I guess I would suggest, and as I told the neighbors out there, maybe we, we need to take this once at a time, the main thing was to stop this apartment thing. There are other options, there's a couple of us have talked about for that land, and I think that as a matter, maybe be discussed another day, I think the, the potential of what we want to do right now, bring that apartment project to an end, try to prevent any other apartments or multi-dwelling, or other dwelling being built back there for residential purposes, and then, I think we can, as a community, can readdress, maybe what's best for the city to look at for doing with the land. But, that's what I approached the neighborhood with when we talked, these different people have different ideas, and basically I approached the neighborhood, let's do this one step at a time, let's take care of the apartments going up, any maybe residential dwelling or building being back there, and we've got time, don't rush into anything, let's think this out. There are pros, cons, what's good for today, is it good for the future? Let's reapproach it at a later date as to what to do with the land.
That sounds good to me, Doug.
Me.
Could we like donate that to the park for the ninety-nine years?
We own the park.
So, yeah.
Add it is what I think.
Talking like donate it to the park district?
Park district for a dollar for ninety-nine years and that ties it up for ninety-nine years, you know? That's what I'm saying. We can send it to the park.
We can come up with.
So they reach out to the park district first and make sure that that's something that they would be.
And that way it ties it up for ninety-nine years. Dog park.
Well, I think we could table this, cause we're, we're, it's not gonna go any further.
Yeah.
On, on the apartments, cause, but we can work on something to ensure that.
We're working on a second location and hopefully that one works. If not, we'll go to another one.
Correct.
But as we discuss Thursday night, uh, the goal, or Tuesday night, the goal of the people is just to get on record, get the council to acknowledge or the committee, whichever it needs to be, that this apartment deal is done. Cause not gonna go there, and that's what they're looking for.
I, I probably can speak for everyone here. I don't believe anybody is gonna vote for it with the input that the residents gave. Cause that's what we need, your input. And you overwhelmingly gave us what you wanted, so I don't think it would go any further.
It's not anyways.
No, I'm just saying, even if, even if there was something, I don't think it would go any further.
Okay, so moving on.
Make sure that they don't have anything else.
Anything else?
Now, you don't have to say, but you can.
Okay, moving on to the street garage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when we acquired the property of Irving Street from the, uh, the state, uh, the idea was one day to consolidate all our facilities up there, uh, make it more efficient, number one. Number two, taking care of a potential ice sore at that part, uh, that part of town. Uh, so far it's been very successful. We are two for two in, uh, in the sale of buildings that we have been able to do. Both the water garage and the Mary Street Garage, both were sold to private businesses. And both are doing very well, so.
Far actually, just added more employees.
That's great. We, uh, have made some money on the buildings that were otherwise just sitting there and not being fully used. And we've created numerous jobs that are helping our tax base and bringing people into town, so. We've been approached by several other businesses now that know that we're, our intention was to move out there eventually. Uh, these businesses are interested in our street garage on Isaac Beal. And, uh, we want to know, gauge your interest if you'd be amenable to putting that up for, uh, sale and possibly putting a new building out, uh, at the Irving Street facility. And then that would be the final piece of that puzzle. And, uh, before we go any further, you know, answer any questions you might have.
Kevin?
I wondered, what happens if you put it on, at auctions it off tomorrow? Between then and when we build a new building, what's the plan?
Well, we would have to make sure when we auction that the parameters would be that they can't get into our new buildings open. We would definitely say that. If we, if we put up a new building, or start with a new building today, you're probably looking at the end of next year. Before it's even done, so, you know, we would certainly need a place. I mean, we could have some things, but.
Would, would you consider then selling the business, or selling the building to whomever wins the auction or however you do it? And they lease it back to us during that timeframe, how that works on paper?
On, on an agreed price ahead of time, sure. They will lease it back to us for however long it takes. So we would have everything planned that didn't cost a new building and, um, you know, and the minimum price that we need on this building too. We have right now, we have about four hundred thousand dollars in that fund that we made off those two buildings already that could, will go to this purchase price of W buildings.
We are, we had this one appraised, it's been a while now, the one that I fired.
It was appraised at three hundred and ninety thousand, um, a few years ago. We had it appraised again, we had it appraised again this year, the spring. In April it shows five twenty-five, five twenty-five. Uh, I think it's, you know, I think the prices are gonna be substantially higher than that. On the, just judging by, you know, what they're going prices for some of those buildings and the interest that we're seeing, so. I'm sure we, I'm sure we set that number.
I just wanted to share some information. Um, I caught Mr. Dunn walking into City Hall about a week, two weeks ago. And I've been hearing through different channels that he might not be so apt to move into this building and things of that nature. So I wanted to get his perspective. He's the one that takes care of all these crews, kinda keeps everybody in order on a daily basis. So I wanted his perspective. And, uh, Mr. Dunn was very honest with me. He actually even called me back the following day to follow up with some more information. And, um, he said at first, when this was first brought to his attention, when we first got our first appraisal, he was very much kind of against it, not because he didn't wanna make the move, but because he didn't wanna see us take the loss on the building that we had that was worth more than what he thought we would get from it. Um, with everything changing now, us getting the new, um, appraisal with higher value, knowing that we have potential people that are ready to purchase it and occupy it and there's more than one going to the bid process, most likely is going to garner us more than what the asking price is. Can't guarantee that, understand that. Um, but with all those things being said, um, Mr. Dunn told me that, you know, his, his feeling about it was now a lot more firm with the going forward because of the fact that we weren't gonna take that loss on the building like he thought we would. He just really didn't wanna see us take the loss on a good building. Um, so, um, I just kinda wanted to share that with everyone. He's fully on board with it as far as the move, um, you know, he said, his, uh, the following day when he called me, he said, you know, if everything works out to where we, you know, we get it sold for a good price and we can build a new one and all be together up there, he goes, it's gonna be a great thing, so.
In addition, if I may, a new building is gonna be more energy efficient too.
Right, right.
Yeah, so right now there's a lot of doors there, that's been some of the issue. We've already been kind of, kind of in contact with a possible design, um, you know, uh, they're cutting down the amount of doors, so we're not going through anywhere near the heating issues that we had, losing heat, those types of things, so. And there's more space out there in some areas than what we need. So a new building probably, probably would be, would be smaller than what we have right now. And still be plenty of room.
But it'll be built to our specs again?
It's built to our specs, yeah. Cause we gotta take into account that we've got other buildings out there, some of them already being used. Uh, but there are some ways that we talked about possibly combining break rooms, office space, those types of things, so. But what we're looking for you, it, it just, you know, gauge your interest and then permission to go ahead and start, you know, getting a plan together at least.
Okay, Kurt?
Any idea on cost of the new building constructed at Irving? What kind of ballpark price we're looking at?
We, we don't have a, a firm price yet. We've been in contact with, through state purchasing, a, a Sourcewell who, uh, has a huge discount on buildings. So, we think we can put up a, a really nice building for, you know, approximately, you know, in the million dollar range, somewhere around that. Maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, depending on what our final plan is.
So, if the other one sells for seven hundred thousand, where's the other three hundred thousand?
Yeah, four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand sitting there.
Okay.
So we'll have, we have a million, if we get seven hundred thousand, we have a million one right now. And it, it is close, in the streets fund, streets apartment, uh, there's some funds in that too. So, so, you know, like I say, if you approve all that, we'll, we'll come back with a plan. You know, we'll show you what, what is gonna work, what estimated cost is gonna be and, and, uh, and then we set a minimum bid and, you know, let it go from there. But it's gotta financially work, we're not going to, you know, we're not gonna.
I'm pretty sure that the potential buyers, our businesses in our areas, this could also benefit us for expansion of local businesses as well. Maybe jobs too, possibility.
Right, but there could be, there could be people from other areas too. But we know some from it, local areas that approach us.
Mr. Chair? Do you, Rob, do we just need to make?
I think he's just asking for a, a vote, a vote of confidence, if you will, that, to proceed with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion for a vote of confidence.
I'll say it.
Can you all favor say nay?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Okay, okay, I guess that one.
Let us know what you find out.
Thank you, we'll, we'll give your reports as we get some more information. Thank you.
Okay. Then we also have the disposition of various properties.
Mr. Paul, Rob?
Yes, here we go. Okay, first up is three thirty-one Licky Street. That is one that we acquired from, uh, tax foreclosures. We're gonna demo it, um, hoping that, uh, there was a charitable organization that thought they might be able to get some funding. Doesn't look like that's gonna be available, so we're gonna be demoing it. Demo costs are gonna be roughly, uh, ten five to eleven, uh, right now. Um, still looking for more quotes, but that's gonna get demoed.
So the previous person that offered, made an offer on that, not interested now?
They're interested in the lot.
Just the lot?
Yeah, there's, there's, some neighbors are interested in the lot. But the, the charitable organization, you know, is looking to maybe try and get it for rehab. I'm gonna continue to work that angle because I think if we can get a, anytime we can get a family in a property without having to tear down the property or, or even one of our empty lots, getting it into a family situation is much, much better. But it's, it's pretty deplorable condition. Uh, let's see what's, what's gonna be in that. Woodlon, this one is eight seventeen Woodlon Avenue. This, uh, that house is no longer there. The gentleman that demolished that house doesn't want the lot, would like to not have to mow it anymore. And would like to donate it to the city of Cyrus. If you'll notice, kinda catty corner there, uh, across the alley, uh, ten forty-nine is already a city lot. So it'll be, can take this with some other city land. This may be something that we take ownership to. This one is likely not buildable lot as it sits because of the narrowness of it. But we'll, we'll look into that. But we need a resolution from council to accept the donation of that lot. And once we have it, we'll figure out what we can do with it, but.
The owner's on neither side of the property?
Well, they don't wanna, the, the owner that currently owns it just wants to donate it to the city. Um, he's got property maintenance violations cause he hasn't mowed it and some other things. He just wants to offer under. So, we, we may end up doing a lot split and offering it to the other property owners or we may, we may have joined to some of the other stuff we, we go, we have out there. But right now it's just whether or not you guys are willing to accept it as a, as a donation to the city. And this is eight seventeen Woodlon.
So if we do try to get this, if we do accept this, then your processes, you're gonna talk to those two neighbors to possibly split it? And, and sell it to them or how you?
That'll be up to you guys. Uh, we'll bring it, once we own it, we'll bring it back to you to decide what we wanna do with it. We'll certainly explore all those options, whether it can be a joint to some of these other lots. There's a number of city-owned lots that kinda in that area. You know, we can, we can look at the bigger picture of what else is going on out there. But again, that would be, that would be something that'll come back to you once we own it. Right now it's just whether or not you wanna own it.
And then we'll split it and collect taxes on it?
I think if we obtain that land and then possibly split it, we'll still obtain taxes from that, won't we?
If you split it, then the property taxes will go up for the people on either side of it. If you join it with other city land out there, you may be able to turn it into something buildable. It may have some other use to it, I don't know. Um, you know, that's, that's down the road. You, we, the eight eighty-three, that's a city lot. The ten forty-nine and the, uh, ten fifty-one are city lots. I believe ten fifty-six is a, is a city lot as well. So there's, there's a, it'll be contiguous to a lot of city lots, you know, and, and alleys. So it's, you know, we can look at what we wanna do with it after the fact. First step is whether or not you guys wanna, wanna acquire as a donation.
So I guess what we need is somebody to motion whether or not we will accept this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Madam Chair? Question for the law director, a motion that has been requested legislation, um, regular emergency?
Uh, I, I'd request a, an emergency resolution, cause I'll go ahead and start the paperwork with the current owner. You know, he's anxious to unload that property.
Change that motion to emergency?
I'll change it to make a motion for emergency legislation.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
All right. Next one is... Oh, this is eleven sixty West Stone. This is, uh, set for a court hearing, uh, in September. So there's nothing to do with it at this point in time. Uh, once we have the court ruling, I'll let you know whether we own it or not. Uh, we're competing with the land bank for it, although we did pay to tear it down, not the land bank. But I'll let you know. Uh, skip down because we'll come back to that in the next section. And that one. Okay, this is Woodlon. This is the old, uh, element, part of the old elementary school location. This was, this was part of the series of lots that were deeded to the city. It's part of the program that tore that down, I think it was some sort of grant funding that tore that down. There was a restriction on selling it, that restriction has ended. Um, so now it is available for sale. The, we, the city can sell it. Uh, that is, um, I've checked with Landin and verified the size of that lot. It'd be, uh, buildable, would be a, a buildable single-family home. Uh, I will, the property to the right there, the corner of Woodlon and the alley is, is.
Faler?
Faler, yes, Faler. That property is subject to being condemned and is in the process of being torn down, uh, at some point in time. That's, that's a real property there. But the, uh, that lot, city owns it, it could be sold if you want. There is some interest in, in the lot from a neighbor that would like to, I think, just have four yard space there. Uh, but it, it's also a family buildable lot. So, if you might wanna ask for public comment, I'm gonna tell you what to do, but.
Yes, we are interested just for a bigger yard for ourselves or for at least some of the neighbors.
You have a couple of options, you could put it out for a public bid, you could, uh, or transfer it to C I C and initiate a sale either to, um, you know, at, you know, whatever the appraised value is. Your options.
So, we can actually put a C I C and sell it to them because we know they're gonna take care of it because they're a neighbor.
Good.
The property.
Okay.
You don't have, we don't have an appraisal on it yet, you'd have to, you'd have to acquire some appraisals. And you can set the terms and conditions of, you know, what you wanna transfer, you know, you can, any deed restrictions you may want or may have would all be subject to that. So, if you wanna get an appraisal first, we could do that.
And just a point if I may, uh, the last several lots that we've dispersed up through land bank, the workers' price of being owned every one of them at fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, probably in that range.
Yeah.
Uh, this one's, this one's a little bit different because it's, it's buildable and it's on a residential street. Um, so it may probably be a little bit higher than that, but.
Yeah.
I, I doubt it gets much more than three thousand at most, so.
And you, I'm sorry, Mr.? Uh, the corner of Faler, that lot is potentially coming to us?
No, that, that lot is, um, I'm, I'm strongly urging the property owner to transfer that to land bank for, for demo. Um, but it is the demo one way or the other. It's either to donate to land bank. He's either gonna donate to land bank and demo it or the city will do it while he's in jail.
Land bank won't accept it. They, they declared a number of properties that have had fires.
I know. And we're working on that. The issue is with asbestos on that. But, because that was a manufactured home-built post-asbestos, wouldn't be asbestos issues with it. So, hoping to maybe convince. But, it's gotta get torn down and it's in court right now. Charter's pending.
Alright. I guess he's asking for a motion as to what we'd like to do with that land.
Yeah, depending on what you wanna do, it depends on what kind of motion we want. If you wanna resolution to transfer it to land bank. If you want more information such as appraisals, um, you know...
You mean CIC is something?
CIC, yes, I'm sorry.
I, 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 Mr. Chairman, I think we should get an appraisal on that to see what the possible value is before we move on. So, you know, we can see what our options are and then possibly do the transfer to the CIC and...
I get that question.
Actually, if I may, if you were to pick or if you were to obtain the lot, do you have plans to build anything on it or leave it literally just yardage?
Not at this time. As far as building, maybe sometime in the future, but not likely. There's some idea, just some way to shed or something.
Just try and find out. Is here again, you know, you go put thirty by forty pole barn out there or something?
No, 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 no.
Just checking, just checking.
No, I don't think he does that.
Just asking. I agree with you, Mr. Rekeeper. I think we need to find out what it's worth before we just go tossing it. I'm not opposed to, you know, then maintaining it and taking care of it. I will say, I, I'm kinda with Mr. Ratliff. I would love to see a single-family home put back there again since it's a buildable lot. But, if nobody's wanting to build right there and anything right now, I would like to see it at least put to good use and maintained and taken care of. So, let's find out what we got here.
We'll, we'll leave that to committee. We'll get to appraisals and we'll come back.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming and telling us what you, your plan for it.
This is the point of presentation where everybody goes, "Boo."
No, this is where I say, "Thank you, Lord."
This is 114 East Lickie Street. We now own this. Our demo estimates to date are about twelve thousand five hundred. It is a big house.
Yeah.
And it is on a tight space.
Don't knock the garage over.
What's that?
Don't knock the garage over.
Yeah, so, the, the costs of demo are gonna be somewhat high. And twelve-five is what we're seeing so far. We're gonna proceed with demo. We're waiting on asbestos to come back. And obviously, that'll, that's a game changer how that turns out. But, assuming we don't have asbestos issues, we, we, we hope to send recumbant to that. I, I, my goal is still by Halloween. So, once it's down and demoed, we'll come back to you for options of whether you wanna sell it, transfer it, whatever you wanna do with it. But, we're gonna, a clear block.
So, not at our expense?
No, we're demoing this at our expense.
Oh, we're...
Yeah.
I assume you're gonna have a parade permit for the street closure that day and maybe bring some boot rocks in?
Uh, yeah.
You're gonna have your show for a day, I guess.
It's, it's been a, it's been a real problem for a while.
Honestly, guys, I think if he just taps it with his backhoe, it'll probably all just pay. Well, they've put all the extra weight of all the plywood on it and it's still standing. Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably what's holding it up still.
Well, I wouldn't do one of those fair things, you know, where you take the sledgehammer and you hit the car. But, that would be really dangerous. So, we're gonna do that. But, that's, that's another thing of where we're at with that. We're, we're gonna have to demo it. And the, the, the cost of demo far exceeds the value of an empty lot even. But, that's where we're at.
Mr. Me?
Uh, would your boss be interested? That's just right behind where you work, right?
Nice parking lot?
Yeah, it's a parking. We've had that discussion. There you go.
Years ago.
We've had the discussion. It's just one of those, it's a case of, I don't think that my, myself and then my, and Dwayne are gonna be the only ones that want it. So, that'll be where we run into some problems because the other person that might want it's been trying to sell a lot of the property around there for a while and it's been sitting vacant. And for some reason, they want that lot that's empty after the house is gone too, so... And I know my boss well enough to know that he won't spend more than he thinks he needs to for it, so...
Ball's grand.
But, yes, that would be a, a great, for us, we would love to purchase it after it's torn down from the city and have extra parking and, and use it as a, maintain it and take care of it.
There, there, there is interest. It, it is a commercial property and it's in a commercial location. We're, we'll recoup some of our money, but, you know, that, that lot in perfect condition is, is, you know, as you indicated, fifteen hundred on some of the other ones. And that's not a buildable lot. So, we'll, we'll recoup what we can. We'll come back to you guys with, with that, with, with it down.
Alright.
Place is less of, left of the most beautiful lot.
Okay. And then this is, this is the big one, I think. This is 204 West Mary. It is a oddly shaped lot. Uh, the house is there and been approached by the current inhabitants of the lot. We did reach out and got a couple of appraisals, or tried to get a couple of appraisals. We got one back. This is from Katona, Millkey. Sheriff Katona actually went through the place. She indicated that it is, it is savable, thankfully. And she provided you with her fair market value estimate of, of what that, that property would, would sell for. So, your options, I believe, are to, one, put it out to a public bid and see if there are interests from, you know, we have, we have a lot of homeowners or home remodelers or investors. You can put it out to a public bid for just anybody. You can put it out to a public bid with some deed restrictions, if you see a family owner occupied, that kind of thing. Or, you can transfer it to CIC and just list it with a Realtor or negotiate a price within certain parameters for the current occupants.
Rob, is there not a way to do deed restrictions through CIC?
You would do the CIC, you would do the deed restriction before you transferred to CIC. So, CIC would accept the deed restrictions you put on it.
Okay, just the way you said it, it was like you couldn't, so...
Oh, no, no. You, it, CIC would own it. They can put deed restrictions on it too. But, their deed restrictions would not necessarily have to comport with what you would want. It's a separate entity, so, if you wanted specific deed restrictions, you wanted to ensure that those deed restrictions got put on that deed, you would, you would authorize that transfer to CIC with that caveat in place.
Yes. I just, I wanted to, to the deed restriction point, I, I actually encountered another situation separate from city council and everything else where there's someone I know had built a home and they built it with deed restrictions for the contractor and everything. And after they lived there for about a year, somebody else built a home close to them and violated the deed restrictions that the contractor gave to them. And when they went back to said contractor to take care of it, they were basically told, "Eh, sorry about the lot." So, even, even with deed restrictions, you're still left with basically not calling that guy over there, somebody like him, to file a lawsuit for you on your behalf and try and jump through all them hoops. I mean, I'm not saying deed restrictions aren't a good thing, but they're not as, I think, have as much teeth as what we like to think they do.
I, I will say also that this, this house gets a little complicated too. Because, you know, when you talk about a single-family or owner-occupied, this house has this added-on, I don't know, office.
Like an office?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else you call it. I don't know what it was originally, but it...
It's, it's been used as an office. It's been used as an apartment.
Yeah.
It's been a brochure of acres.
Yeah, so, I mean, even best-case scenario, you know, it's gonna be an office or I think even the, the individual that lived there talked about maybe converting it into a small efficiency apartment. You know, offset their rent costs. So, when you talk about the owner-occupied deed restriction, it gets a little, a little weird on this one because we know going in, you're gonna have probably a apartment, you have a house, not just a house.
How, how is that, it's muddy things as long as they're occupying part of it?
You, you could specify it that way. That, that as long as the, the ti, part of the house is owner-occupied.
Correct.
But, it's just a little bit different because of that, that part.
I, I must have missed. Why are we, what's the concern that we want it to be owner-occupied versus being a tenant-occupied? Is there, is there a reason that it should be, or do we, do we care?
It, it's, it's one of those things. It's, it's up to you guys. It's, you know, it, it, I think a lot of it will depend on how you wanna sell it. If you wanna, if you just wanna put it out to auction and get the highest price possible, you know, you're gonna see certain investors.
That'd be a way to pay to demolish your other ones.
It certainly would. Cause I'm, I'm looking at probably twenty to twenty-five, somewhere in there, final call-in on the others. The asbestos inspections on the two are a magnitude of almost above, so...
I'm gonna say I lean more towards the CIC route because if you just put it out to bid, yeah, we may get max dollar out of it. We may gain some more money to tear houses down, but then we're gonna be left with a bill to tear that one down in six or eight months or a year or two if it doesn't go to the right person. It's the person that's gonna maintain it and take care of it. With the CIC, we have a little bit of ability to say, you know, you've already got ten properties that are already struggling with maintenance issues. You probably shouldn't be buying this one. I guess that's where I'm at with it. I wanna make sure that, you know, it's already in the situation where we're having to take it because it's not being taken care of. I don't wanna see it keep going into disrepair because now we're another short of a house. It's not gonna be buildable because we can tell by the lot size, it's not buildable. You know, I just, I hate to see us keep losing homes in our community that, I agree with Mr. Ratliff, you can put a body in and have people living here. So, I know our number, huh?
A live body.
Right.
Thanks for that clarification.
I guess you guys who catch plenty of others.
But, I guess that's just kinda where I think to with it.
Mr. McSays?
As a person from a gallery, Mr. Ratliff, sitting here listening, everybody talking back and forth, whether it's owner, rented, tenant, whatever, but there would be no reason they could put a deed restriction on there to make it a single occupancy. You're talking about an office could be made into apartment at side peak. With their main reason, if you're going to sell the place as, I don't think you're, as a residence, could the city not put on the deed that it will be a single-family dwelling? And nothing else if you wanted to restrict it that far. I've seen to be the discussion I was hearing here, whether it's owner, owner, tenant, but apartment or whatever, it didn't seem before you were leading, could you not put on the deed that it has to be a single-family dwelling?
Defining single, there, there's two issues. One, defining a single-family is difficult because families are very non-traditional nowadays. And two, because of that apartment. It's, whether it's gonna be an office or an apartment, it's gonna be something. And...
But, I, but I heard you discussing like they were gonna apply a three-month or do something with the house anyway, what I was kinda hearing to say, that they could probably tie that office or whatever that is into the house.
Yeah, and it'll, it'll probably end up being, well, they could, you know, nor, normally the, the issue's gonna be whether it's over-occupied or, or not. With, defining it by family just gets really complicated nowadays.
Hold up. Kurt, you had wanted to say something?
Oh, I was just, if, if it goes to the auction process, that would allow anybody to buy it, even people on council, right? Cause it goes to a public auction?
Public auction, anybody can bid on it. I can bid on it. You can bid on it. Mayor can bid on it. Make a nice law office, I suppose, I don't know. Yeah, no, if it, if it goes to a public auction, that's one-hundred percent public auction. Anybody can bid on it.
What's looking for a rental property?
I was thinking you might buy it, Doug.
Chance. You're ready to move on, right? What's that? You're ready to move on, right? Next one? No, I'm not done with the first one yet. I wouldn't have had you put so much time and effort and money into it because it was one of these properties that unfortunately got let go for fifteen or twenty years, you know? We have a lot of those, so...
Mr. McSays, or Mr. Rekeeper, you had something?
I, I, I kinda favor what Doug's saying. If we put it up for public auction, it could still revert back to...
Where we're at now?
Where we're at now. If we can, we, you know, get, get the restrictions on it and turn it over to the CIC, they would do the negotiating to the current potential buyer. Ruck, am I correct?
Yeah, you know, you just...
And I'm referring to the...
You wanted to find what restrictions you want.
To the, uh, the one who'd be the financial backer instead of the current.
Well, in... In talking, talking specifically about the, the proposal that was made by the people that are current occupants, if you're talking about owner-occupied, that would not qualify because they're, they're talking about a family member purchasing it and then, and then letting them live in. Now, if a family member purchases and puts it in their name, that, that's, that's different, but...
I doubt both.
Well, but if, if you're talking owner-occupied, that specifically would not qualify. The situation that was proposed by the current occupants is not in that category. And I share your trepidation with the putting it out to bid. I mean, while it maximizes the, the dollars, you know, I, I can't prohibit people from purchasing.
True, that's, that's...
You know, sitting on the property maintenance appeals board, you know, there's a list of people that we would prefer not own it, but...
Ah, yeah, definitely know that. I mean, that's, it's got its good points and bad points.
Yeah, it, it both do. That's why you pay to make the tough decision.
Do we, I, you know, I think we need a little more information before we jump in and decide. I don't know, Steve, feel differently?
I don't think there's anything more to discuss. I mean, what we're gonna discuss when we get out of bid, I mean, that's...
We gotta do something for that, well, I don't...
Yeah, if, if we put it out to bid, it's, it's sale of public property. It's a lengthy bid process. It's a lot, long period of time for advertisement. It'll, you know, so it will be bumping up on the end of the year in winter for, for getting things done and moving as quickly as we can. It's gonna be pushing into the year.
If you transfer it to the CIC, is it reasonable, are you allowed to say, give the CIC sixty days to work with the guy who's living there now, see if he can obtain financing? And if he can't, after whatever time, the CIC then could auction it off without going through all those steps that the city has to go through?
Yes, yeah, the CIC...
I mean, that way, you're giving the guy who's there and living in it and, and a, a family who's paying taxes and using water and, and living in the school district, the opportunity to make it their home. And if they can't pull it off, then, you know, you take the next step and, and auction it off.
Yeah, if you transfer it to the CIC, CIC has, has the authority to dispose of the property pursuant to whatever recommendations are, are made. And whether they sell it outright, they list it with the Realtor, they take bids, the, you know, the mechanism, how they sell it is...
Does the CIC have any funding at current leaders that all been dispersed of?
Uh, there's, I think, a couple...
There's money in our account right now because we need to transfer it back to the city. And that was just for the sale of the parking lot, which we're just getting ready to transfer that back to the city because it's proceeds from that fund goes back to them.
So, in other words, we've just donated to the CIC and then once the CIC disposed of it or whichever, then that money comes back?
You, you sell it to the CIC for, for a dollar.
I got you.
And then the CIC by law has to transfer any profit in the sale.
Back to the city.
Minus that cost back to the sale.
I, I...
Real, real quick. So, we transfer this to the CIC for a dollar, but we haven't figured out a way to make up of things that our own residents couldn't get things for a dollar and have like five, one year to make it livable, five years before this and...
When it's, when it's public property, our advice clearly requires it to be sold by, through public auction. So, the, the, the city-owned property has to be sold at public auction.
And why can Toledo and Columbus all do this?
You're talking about their land banks, which is totally different. Our county land bank, to my knowledge, at the time, and maybe you might be able to answer this with me. I know one property that we obtained that we sold it to be lived in. The remainder were all torn down. And that was the way that the grant funding is. We look over at Richland County as an alternative. Richland County sold tens, if not twenties or thirties of houses to people that were rehabilitated and to be lived in. But, that's, that was on a county land bank level. So two totally different things.
Yeah, I just, I just don't understand why we can't have something like that, so tearing these houses down. Because if somebody's got skills and they just bought it for how cheap, then they can put that money into it.
Which is what the county land bank did. We did a, the one that somebody's living in, we did a land contract and gave them six months to bring it up to livable standards. Otherwise, they reverted back to us and we tore it down. And it's being lived in now.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's part of the, part of the CIC is the ability to do that. And so the CIC would have that ability.
Yeah, to answer your question, there's just aren't a lot of people unwilling to do that type of living in and rehabbing it. We haven't found it in land bank that people are, are not breaking down the doors to get these properties.
I've never been given that offer, so I didn't even know, that's why I'm asking.
Got a house or sell if you're interested.
I, I missed that, I missed that on a house in Columbus this way, that's how I knew it happened down there and I, you know. But yeah, so I know that there's a lot of people with a lot of skills around here, but don't have the credit to go buying things, but.
But we'd love to do it, but you know, a lot of times the people that don't, that you don't want to own it or buying it, then they just keep tearing it again. And it's that, that's where we would happen. And a land bank was so effective at, at obtaining some of these properties. And without Mr. Ratliff, the city has been able to obtain a lot of these dilapidated properties and they can tear them down. But we'd much rather have people live in, we fix them up, better for our tax rolls. Doug, you keep going like this to me, so go ahead.
Well, cause you were gonna try and make the motion, I think, I just wanted to, if, if we're going to move forward with transferring into the CIC, we have Ms. Catona's fair market value appraisal here. And she gives a window of fifteen to twenty thousand. So if we're gonna transfer this to CIC, we need to give them a figure of what they need sell for.
My only other question for Rob is, you mentioned that the public bid process is lengthy. Describe what that means.
Well, the next meeting, we would have legislation authorizing us to put it out to bid. It's, has to be advertised five consecutive weeks. And then created for receiving the bids and then bid openings and then.
So three to four months.
Yeah, that's what I said, push it the end of the year.
Okay.
Plus the cost of advertising.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
So fifteen to twenty, nobody, nobody thinks that's a fair market value on that property?
That's what the expert said. I think she, yeah, she put some comparables in here, I, you know, I, I don't know. I'll, I'll definitely want to kind of defer to the project.
You asked other realtors to give a BPO, they.
I didn't, I haven't received anything back from you yet. And, you know, and I looked at some of the comps that she provided with it and.
She kinda went from low to high end, she gave one of each level.
Yeah, much, much bigger houses on bigger lots, sell them for.
Honestly, I think the one that compares best is the one that's on, the one that would be on Rockham Street, I think it's walnut.
Walnut.
Walnut, yeah, the one that's on walnut. To me, that's the best comparison, not necessarily for size, but for lot size, cause that lot's really not much bigger than the lot that we're looking at for the house that we're talking about.
And that sold for fifteen?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Granted though, I will say that that house has history with having the back door kicked in one time for a raid, so I don't know.
The six twenty-one South Walnut?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was listed for twenty-five, it sold for fifteen.
Yeah, it's on the spices up in the corner, that's what I was looking at, even though it was listed higher, it went for fifteen.
I see, okay, yeah.
Behind the staple.
I, I may or may not know the bar.
Yeah, they all went pretty cheap.
Yeah, I mean, I've been seeing a lot of these listed much higher than they're selling.
Well, you're, you're an expert in buying these houses, so.
Okay, look at this one, it's, it's on walnut, it's got asbestos all through the house, I know that. I know that's why it's for fifteen thousand and not forty thousand, fifty thousand. I agree with the comps, but the comps perhaps a reason that they are this price as well. Then if it was going to the man and lady that was here, and they could assume the loan, I would be more apt to sell it for them. See what I'm saying? Rather than put it out for bid, you know, owner occupied. I'd be willing to accept the twenty thousand from them, rather than an owner occupied, rather than a renter.
So Mr. Meel, like when you had asked before, if we could offer it to them and give them so many, so many days, we'd offer it out at such and such a price, if it's not out by that many days, then we either go for auction or a higher.
Yeah, to put a minimum bid on it.
I think if we're gonna try and do something like that, then the first thing we need to do is contact those people. We need to have them go to a financial institution, we need to get them a letter of preapproval that says that they can be preapproved for set amount. If house is in condition it is, otherwise, we're just trying to do something that they can't do anyway.
That's thirty days, so I think thirty days qualifies.
Give them thirty days to figure that out?
Give them sixty days, cause it's a thirty day process once they start.
Correct.
That's what I would, kinda what I was trying to go for.
And I'd be jumping all over that and sell that to them for twenty thousand, because I know they're gonna live there, owner occupied, they're gonna take care of it. They're gonna have kids, they're gonna go to school, there're gonna be taxes.
But, and, not to rain on that parade, but we do have a situation right now where we have technically squatters living in a house that, that we've just taken over. And, you know, we, so we have that open liability situation there.
As well.
Okay, what are you used to, Jeff?
I think the option that they were looking for, I mean, yes, I think, in, in, in all honesty, yes, he would love to own the home. But I think that their end goal and what they really wanted was for his father to purchase the home and them to rent it from his father. I think that's really what they're, they're opportunity looking at for right now. I mean, yes, they would love to own it, but.
So why doesn't CIC consider doing a land contract to them? And however they wanna pay it off, whether they go get a loan, whether they just pay rent for a couple of years till they own it? Whether their father buys it? Let them figure that out, that doesn't have to be our problem to figure out, is that a solution?
CIC, you, you'd have to find CIC, because if they're gonna hold that, that notice, land contract, they're gonna need insurance and some other things. It's, it's gonna be a, a long-term project for them. You know, you need a, you know, a few, a couple hundred dollars a month, stretch it, stretch out a few years.
But here again, now you're back to the, let's say that we end up in that situation, they can't afford it anymore.
Trying to make sure we look at all the options.
But I just, that's where I think that you end up in that situation where they can't afford it anymore, now we're affecting them.
Right.
So is there a way to do both? Where you do like a sixty day land contract while the paperwork gets figured out? If it doesn't work, as of sixty days, that's up. It's either transfers to them, however they're figuring out how to pay for it, or it goes into sale?
Well, the, the, the one option you have is, is to transfer it to CIC, list it with the realtor or just put it for sale by owner, sign on it. First, first serve, you know, set a price and a minimum acceptable price. And, and if they or family or whoever can qualify, they can come and get it. If, if one of our landlords wants to come and get it, then CIC doesn't necessarily have to sell it. They have the option to sell it, but they have a minimal price.
That was my question, to make sure that if we transfer it to the CIC, for you to do that, you would use your discretion on.
Well, not me, CIC.
That's what I mean, not you, not you. The CIC would use a discretion on.
What offer they accept.
From, and from who? To prevent, to prevent the set people that we run into multiple problems with.
You'd have to be very careful about discrimination issues and, and a myriad of other things, but. You know, I, I, I think, I think your most cost-effective and your most efficient way to get this out of our possession and get it into the hands of whoever's gonna live in it. Let it is transferred to the CIC with a, with a minimal purchase price. Let the market dictate it.
You can do owner oc, I'm sorry.
Aaron? No, you're not.
You can do owner occupied for like thirty days and see if anybody's owner occupied for like thirty days, and after that you can release it to them.
You, you can, yeah, I mean, you know, like, much like the Woodline property, the, the city accepted that with like a ten-year clause to it. There could be a sunset provision on an owner occupied provision, that it has to be owner occupied for five years or ten years or something along those lines. But the, the danger with that, the, the danger with all those things is that, you know, you, you take out a mortgage for twenty thousand dollars and you've got a five-year owner occupied restriction. You lose your job, you walk away and it sits there for three years, five years. All the property taxes get back up to twenty thousand and then, and they come and get it again. So, there's, there's not a risk-free path, there's not an easy solution. I, I, I think that that's what we can do, is get as much money as we can, as quickly as we can, use that to tear down the other houses and, and hope for the best.
How much do you need for the other houses?
It's gonna be, well, we have, we have money budgeted, but the cost of those is gonna be somewhere between twenty and twenty-five.
And then on thirty?
For both of them. I will say that it did not sell at land bank auction or at a tax auction. Now, I don't remember, I, I was gonna say, I think it was twenty-eight was what the taxes on it were, but I, that, I can be look, I can be thinking of the other one, so I don't know what the tax number was. It did not sell at tax auction for whatever the tax number was, it was not, it was not too, too much higher than what that praise number is.
So you're recommending that we, your legal advice is, you're recommending us not to finance it, but to sell it outright?
But my legal advice is to, let's get this out of our hands as quickly as possible, not have to deal with the liability.
Right.
And that would be turn it over to the CIC and do what you do.
It's, honestly, the, the process isn't gonna take, it's six, one half dozen the other. By the time you transfer to CIC, you're maybe a, a few weeks faster. But you're still gonna have closings and transfers and holdings and listing and auctions. You're gonna be a little bit faster with the CIC, but not.
But currently, the CIC is not insured at all and the city is. Is that correct?
Correct.
You don't have liability?
No, it's a covered, it's a covered entity, part of the city, but it does not have its own, it does not have its own insurance. If it was gonna hold this and.
Transferring it to them temporarily, though, they're covered under the city's liability?
No, no, it would not be covered. The, any, any transfers that the CIC has done to date have been instantaneous transfers, they've taken it, transferred it. It's been a continuous transaction. So if they're gonna hold it, then they're gonna need to insure it as well.
Yeah.
Six here, half dozen.
I'm moved, put it to the CIC for seventeen five. Just look difference fifteen to twenty.
I'll second that.
Okay, so one in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, just another question for the Law Director, regular or emergency?
Well, I, I, I think it needs to be an emergency and I wanna clarify, the, the motion is to transfer the property to the CIC. It was required that the CIC sell it with a minimum list price of seventeen five.
As an emergency.
Okay.
I'll make that motion by now.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't ask if I needed to make the emergency motion, it's irrelevant.
No, that's.
So now that it's been motioned and seconded, is it, one in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Is that the last we have for that?
Unless he's got any more than that.
Yeah, one more. Three oh three Galen Street. Uh, this is a land bank property, uh, land bank took this and tore it down. It is a double lot there that faces the tracks. Again, this is a buildable lot, although it's not in a great location, it's commercial to the right there and the tracks right there from it. But it, it is buildable based on size. The issue today is we need a resolution to accept that property from land bank. We're already voted, so. Though, we don't have any cost in it.
I'll make a motion. For a resolution.
That doesn't need to be emergency or anything, does it?
Uh, land bank would prefer to get rid of it.
So do we need to make this an emergency?
As an emergency.
I'll second that as an emergency.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, uh, one in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Yeah, so that, we're back to the beginning, so that's all I have for that.
Okay, is there anything else you're gonna comment?
Public lands and building, um, the parking lot, city-owned parking lots, which are still in committee, we were supposed to pave a couple potentially and use the money from the sale of the parking lot to Bakers. I heard that last week that parking lot was sold to Bakers, is that true?
There was.
So do we have the money now that we could say?
Still sitting in CIC, as we were talking about earlier, the funds are still sitting in CIC. We've not returned them back to the city yet, but then we put them back into the general fund. Or, I'm sorry, it's capital improvement, I believe, is what has to go back into the general fund. I can't remember right off the top of my head, and I'm not gonna sit here and.
It was like thirty-five.
I can tell you the first two numbers were twenty-eight before the pound, and after that, I can't tell you the balance.
Cause we did discuss, say your crack.
Yeah, yeah, we did discuss, I think we discussed not only the parking lots, but possibly setting up a sidewalk fund as well. I think it was something else that was discussed with some of that money, it said it was capital improvement, it goes back into the capital improvement.
Well, I didn't know if the Service Director was still wanting to pave the city lot three this year or.
I'd like to, but I think it might be better if we would wait till next year to do it, based off of what our income could be.
I would think time of the year warrant anything, getting the polar season in and then not the year and stick it.
Well, we could still get it done here in October.
Yeah, you got up to November to pay. Depending on the weather.
I can get, I can get a caution road material. See what it was like. Straight up to you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else for further plans? Okay, then. Hold it at seven twenty-eight.
Okay, I'll call Plating, order at seven twenty-eight. Mr. Mayor, annexation of property is on Route Four.
Mr. Rattle.
Mr. Rattle.
We have been approached by the owner of the property you see highlighted there to annex that property into the city of Fusars. They obviously want city water and sewer, writer can tell you where the water and sewer lines are. They are interested in doing a type one annexation, which would ultimately remove it from the township and it would become solely city of Fusars. It is contiguous both across the street and to the north with city limits. So we would, we'll be coming back to you for formal proceedings as we go through the annexation process. We will be entering into an agreement with them per code to extend water and sewer with the contingency that they annexed into the city. That's, that's gonna proceed, don't really need anything from you tonight, other than to know that we will be extended water and sewer with, under an agreement that they'll be pursuing a type one annexation.
The property that is just to the north of it, which is.
Built a house?
Which is owned by Mrs. Lynn?
Yes.
Is that in the city?
It is not, we'll be reaching out to her to see what her interest may be.
Cause we can't leave an island.
Well, I, I think.
Am I correct?
Well, there, there. Well, there, there, there's some issues that we're looking into with that.
Cause I was gonna say that would form an island and that's.
It will, it will, and, uh, and there, there's some issues that we're gonna look into with that, so that's why we're just kinda updating you right now that, that we'll be doing those things. It also goes to the, um, extension of the water and sewer. Because water and sewer can be extended with the agreement to annex when, when possible, when contiguous. And if, if there may be a stumbling block there, um, it's not definitive yet, but if there may be a stumbling block there, that may be a condition of, of the water sewer extension. But we're, we're anticipating that we're gonna be able to proceed with the type one.
Cause I know she has another property near there.
Yeah.
That is not in the city either.
She lives in the northern one, I think.
I think one of them is in the city and one of them isn't, isn't it? But there, there are some issues with it, but just updating you that that's, that the plan that they would like to annex and we're gonna start looking into getting that done with the extension of water and sewer. Just to tell you where the water and sewer lines, I think they're already right there.
The sewer's on the west side and the water's on the east side of there.
So this will be kinda depending on whether Mrs. Lynn would want that or not?
Not completely, but, but that's gonna be, that's gonna be one of the things that gets back to you.
So you're asking?
Nothing right now.
Nothing, you're gonna get more information?
Yeah, just, just updating you that, that we're gonna be looking into proceeding with, with that. Uh, the other one?
Okay.
Is this one? Y'all may recognize that is Al Smith's place?
Yes.
Owned currently by Mrs. Gar, uh, she would like to annex into the city of Bucyrus. They have requested a type two annexation, which is an expedited form of annexation. It, requirements to that are that it remains both within Whetstone Township and becomes part of the city of Bucyrus. So it will be subject to taxation from, from both sides. It would, any improvements on that property would be subject to, if there was, for example, a retail business there, would be, uh, city income tax, it would be subjected to that. But the township would also retain.
Property.
Portions of the property tax. Things that are specific to the city would also go into the city's property tax. We had talked to the county auditor and she worked up some, some models based on various levels of improvement on the property. It worked out to between fifteen and twenty-five dollars a year difference. More expensive to redo the type two annexation. So the owner is, is happy to go forward with the type two. We are going to proceed with that and annex them in, uh, so that'll be, that'll be proceeding pretty quickly.
Awesome. Just to clarify real quick, Mr. Rattler, um, the property tax that the township gets to keep, if there's any increase in that property tax over and above what it currently is, would we collect that difference? Or would we get just a fifty percent split of that difference?
It, it, it stays, um, it, any improvements get divided the same way, it would get divided now.
Okay.
So, um, the, the county auditor looked at it with, if there were perhaps a retail building built there that had one million dollars in value. And that was the most where it ended up being an extra twenty-five dollars a year to the, for the property owner. So, so they, they wanted to just move forward with the type two and, and the expedited. So we, um, we've submitted a draft to them. Once that's approved, we, the process is we file that petition with the county commissioners. And the expedited type two has some, jumps through really, really quick. So the first thing that'll happen is we will have to adopt a resolution accepting and approving the type two annexation. My guess is the timing of that is gonna be about the time of our next council meeting. So I would anticipate planning on having a special plating committee meeting prior to the next council meeting. Where we'll have the filed and stamped, um, annexation petition with the county and should be able to move that forward at that time.
Have a game.
With this type of a annexation, um, obviously the money split, would the city be taking over police and fire protection for that?
Yes, we would be, we would be authorizing, uh, part of the ordinance that we'll do will be authorizing police and fire protection for that, that property. And water and sewer, we pick up water and sewer as well.
Okay.
For the, any potential development that may go there.
Kurt.
Is the house to the east?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wait.
The property maintenance issues currently existing on that property, are they going to be resolving them if we annex them?
Yes, yes, there is a plan in place that will swiftly resolve, uh, pending property maintenance issues.
Okay.
There is a, a likely new buyer, um, who, who just, uh, is requiring that the annexation be done before, before they purchase.
If, now if that buyer falls through and it did get annexed, are we gonna get stuck with demo in this thing?
No, not this time, there, there, there's an owner and, um, there is already a contract purchase in place. Everything seems, uh, moving forward on, on that. So I don't anticipate us getting stuck and should all go forward. The, there, there is a couple zoning issues, um, but I think we, we're gonna be able to resolve those.
Jim? The property to the east is still west of town, it goes about.
To the east, that little house, I think that little house is actually in the city.
And that's in the city.
Yeah, the, the house is, it's, it's so zigzaggy out there, the house is, TSC is not. TSC is, I think, still on your open projects list because.
Yes.
They were invited to annex because they are receiving city water and sewer, uh, they told us, go away. So, um, you know, that's, that's in, in committee as to how you wanna handle that. Once this one is done, historically, some of the businesses across the street have approached us about annexing. We'll reach out to them, but again, but, uh, right now the focus is on getting this one done for the possible development.
Okay, so we just have to wait for you to.
Yeah, they just want to free up the speed so that when I, when I do request that kind of emergency meeting to get that approved. If you have questions or anything, because make sure we have the right answers in place.
All right, and I see sidewalks was returned back up to plating. Mr. President.
Oh, well, we, um, I guess, Mr. Rattler received a property maintenance issue with the sidewalk there back beginning of the year. And there's some ordinance, I don't even know which it is, but says that council is the only one that has to enforce the sidewalks. And I, I've thought a lot about the sidewalks and if, if we start enforcing it, you're gonna have all kinds of people that can't afford to repair their sidewalks. And I'd hate to, you know, have the little old lady that can't afford to sidewalk get hit with some sort of court thing. And Mr. Hill had researched sidewalk grants and apparently there's none. It's, it's all a self-funded thing where the city, the other cities that have it, they self-funded and run their own grant program. And I thought about that and, um, I thought maybe there's something we could put together similar to that ourselves. I, I kinda jotted some things down here, this is, this is pre-draft. I mean, I'm sure there's all kinds of things that could be done differently, but, you know, like just one, one thing I had in here. There'd be a sidewalk committee, sidewalk replacement grant committee that would decide. Basically, if, if somebody wanted to, to apply for one of these grants, they submit an application to the sidewalk committee. And they would review them, find who all, or, you know, they, they might determine that one. Cause there's probably gonna be more applicants than what we got money. And they, they would be the ones that decide who's in more of the need than.
High traffic areas, low traffic areas.
I guess the thing that brought this all up was down by the elementary school, there was a sidewalk down there.
Yeah.
And, you know, one thing I said in here, I said that this, we shouldn't, the, the grant committee shouldn't give free money to landlords that should be maintaining their sidewalks. Because they have the money, but they're not doing it. It, it should be more geared towards the owner occupied properties. I'm not, I'm not.
Thanks.
I'm not looking at you here, James, but, um, the, the benefits of doing this way is I thought, well, if somebody is already invested in their sidewalks, they're not out anything. Because if we start giving, if we start taking, I don't even know if we can, but if we start taking over all sidewalk replacement, that's not fair to people that have already invested in that, but this'll take care of, I'm hoping, the, the little old lady that can't afford, still living in her house, it's eighty years old. And, um, I guess I'm looking for any comments or if anybody wants to talk about it.
Is this being sent to all the owners?
Okay, this, this, this is not what we're talking about right now, this is something else.
I will, as far as these sidewalks, I've always kinda had, I, I struggle with this because we have an ordinance set up that reflects what we are allowed and not allowed to do with the tree that sits in the tree lawn. And if you go down between Spring or Hobler Street and Spring Street on Oakwood Avenue, there are two houses that sit literally right across the street from each other that the one sidewalk been replaced because the person that purchased the property actually pulled the sidewalk slabs up, cut the tree roots to be able to lay the sidewalk back down flat because it was only about two and a half feet up in the air because of the tree root. If you go directly across the street, there's the same exact thing going on, the piece of sidewalk is literally pointed straight in the air because of the tree root. So this is where I struggle with telling the homeowner that you have to fix it and repair a sidewalk, that the tree that sits in your tree lawn has destroyed and you're not allowed to do anything with that tree in your tree lawn.
Well, he, he did something with that tree.
Right.
That will kill that tree.
Right, but here again, technically, if you wanted to, you could probably go back and find him now for doing that to try and make a safe sidewalk. You know, and that's where I run into this issue, you're gonna tell me I can't touch the tree, but then you're gonna let it destroy my sidewalk and tell me I have to pay to repair the sidewalk.
Just like that photo.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, that's the exact kinda thing.
Cause it's too big of a tree uprooting the sidewalk and.
Well, you know, how old is that tree and who planted it?
Well, it's a silver maple and they grow pretty darn fast, so, you know, it's, and like you saying, you know, if you try to level that out by the owner.
The tree is in the tree lawn, the tree lawn tree is the city's tree. I can't go out and cut that thing down, I can't go out and do anything to it without submitting a petition and getting an okay for it and all that. That's why I have the problem with telling me I have to fix my sidewalk after that tree that I didn't want there anyways has destroyed it.
Well, you could apply for the grant and you could.
But here again, okay, if, if we apply for the grant and the grant's gonna fix the sidewalk, what's that gonna do about the tree that's there?
Well, I've seen a sidewalk once where they made it go around the tree.
Yes, that was on Rogers.
Right.
And now a tree's not there.
Both.
It's a neat looking sidewalks.
But, exactly, but now you're asking the homeowner to put it onto their actual lawn versus in the area where it's supposed to be.
We don't live in a perfect world, you can't legislate everything perfect.
I agree with that, but I'm just, I'm just saying that if we're, if we're gonna say that the tree is our responsibility, then the sidewalk should be the city's responsibility too. That's just where.
Well, I think there's a lot of.
Detailed information for you and I can't even remember how I was involved or got involved in it. The one thing you have to really look forward to, uh, any action creates a reaction. And I remember there was talk, and I can't remember, I think it was Bucyrus, I've been getting, they were enforcing sidewalks and if they were over two inches out of low or something, you had to fix them or replace them. Why don't you go to talk to the first person to make the complaint about this sidewalk? I remember what this turned into, it was like a domino theory, that, those people went out, walked your streets and came back with a list of a hundred or a hundred and fifty other sidewalks that were bad in the city. And I'm just mentioning, that's what you're gonna walk in.
Well, that, that's what we were initially were concerned about when this whole sidewalk enforcement thing came up. So, the grant program is a way, I see, to try to eliminate that as a.
But if you have contact, contact that person, Kurt, and he doesn't qualify for the grant, where do you draw the line? Are you still gonna enforce it against him, but he doesn't apply for grant money? But yet you've got fifty or a hundred other ones that he obviously knows about.
Well, and maybe.
In the back of my mind, I just remembered this incident, I don't even know why I was involved, but this is what the other incident ran into.
At the beginning of this.
You know, maybe, maybe somebody will donate us a hundred thousand dollars every year to this grant program and eventually after ten years we'll have most of the sidewalks.
But I, I agree, sidewalks need to be kept in good order because once one's gone up, I'm not arguing that. But I'm just pointing out the whole statement, action creates a reaction, and you really kinda gotta think ahead and go, okay.
Well, well, maybe we could not enforce the sidewalk and still do the grant program.
Possible. I've got one down High Street, it's up a couple inches, a tree pushed it up, we got rid of the tree. It's not dangerous, but I'd like to make a nice sidewalk, in fact, I was going to put a new sidewalk in when they did the street and the new drains down in that area. Had a phone from the contractor that was doing that, found out that the contractor couldn't do my sidewalk for me because they were down there doing a city project, they couldn't seek out new project. And I had to pay, I was told I had to pay the city a bonus on top of his price. Needs, like, that's just several years ago, the sidewalk stayed as it was.
Well, now, I, I, I'm, I'm the first person that's against the city siting people, like, you know, sending stuff out and because, well, I got another thing I'm gonna be bringing up right after this about somebody that got one of these letters about something related to property and sidewalks and.
Can you say sidewalk, man?
I think the grant idea is a great idea, I think there are several people who would probably take advantage of, you know, advantage of it being better, I know I would take a look at it.
And, and I, I wish something like this would start thirty years ago and we wouldn't be in this situation where just things have been gone for so long that.
But as you say, I don't know, maybe the service director have a, Rob, I did, how many miles of sidewalks do you have within the city?
How many miles of roads we got, and about seventy-five percent of them have a sidewalk.
On both, on both sides.
Okay.
So, anyway.
I, I think we're gonna keep, you know, move on with this, cause there's a lot of information, let's table this, but let's get information.
Yeah, and if you wanna change something on there, I mean, I, I just threw this together real quick.
Right, right, and I, it, it's a start and, you know, we gotta start somewhere, we can keep looking to find a way possible to do this, so, um, unless there, and now you said there was something else you had.
Oh, I had a resident that contacted me, downtown business, and I'll pass this down to the, the two council members down here. They received this letter from the city dated August seventeenth. And I'm just gonna, I'll, I'll just read the whole letter here. It's on city letterhead, says, dear business and or building owner, we have received numerous complaints about the conditions of some sidewalks in the downtown business district. As a business owner in the downtown business district, you are responsible for maintaining the cleanliness of the sidewalk in front of and to the side if located on a corner lot of your business location. This not only includes the removal of snow and ice in the winter, but also includes the removal of weeds, dust, dirt, debris, including cigarette butts. There are numerous weeds on your sidewalk that need to be addressed. There are numerous weeds on your sidewalk that need to be addressed and removed around these, around lamp posts and near your building. We ask you to take a look at your sidewalk area and remember that your sidewalk sidewalk is the quote, front porch to your business where positive first impressions, positive first impressions of your business are made. If you have employees that smoke, we ask that they smoke at the rear of your location if possible. If there is no available area to the rear of your location, we ask that they not throw cigarette butts into the street or on sidewalk out of courtesy. Additionally, please inform your employees that there is a, and this is in bold and underlined, two-hour parking limit in the downtown business district. And that your employees should refrain refrain from parking in front of their buildings to allow spaces for customers and or clients. We have not been enforcing this limit, but we may start unless your business complies. Please have all employees park off the main streets. Thank you. And it's not signed by anybody, but it just says the city of Bucyrus. And I I'm not going to say who this business was, but here's my deal. I know this person and they have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in properties in Bucyrus. They live in this business that they actually live in this above this building that this letter is talking about. And thi- this is the type of stuff that really drives people out. Some, if I was a business that got this letter, I would be mad and this guy is mad. And I I just don't I mean, who all got these letters?
As far as I know, they went to everybody downtown.
Everybody downtown?
You're asking for anything that you wouldn't want them to do. If they're doing it, taking care of it, there shouldn't be an issue. But you just, I've gotten dressed as a whole.
So every every downtown business got this letter?
As far as I know, I didn't, I didn't send it out. I mean, if I am a downtown business, I'd want to keep it clean enough. They're not, they should be. So if they're offended, maybe they're not keeping it clean. I don't know, but I would think we would want our downtown to look nice.
I didn't know that didn't look nice.
You're you're not wrong on that statement, but I did, I got a phone call about this letter from a business that was extremely angry and offended by it, so. But yeah, I get it. But yeah, I, if the two businesses downtown that I get mail out, I didn't get a letter to either one of them.
Well, and there was an issue a couple years back with sidewalks not getting shoveled and I guess some businesses got these letters and then the very next winter, it was pointed out that the Art Park sidewalk was not getting shoveled and that's the city's owned
Is that what the chains came across?
No, they weren't shoved on the sidewalk outside of the
But it was shoveled good this year.
It's actually managed by projects, ain't it?
No, the Art Park's not. Millennium Park is the Art Park.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought
Yeah, Millennium Park is closed off on the inside. Outside sidewalks still taken care of.
And and Is there a resolution? Or ordinance that says you can't have private sidewalk? I I would direct that to Rob, I guess.
You have, there's general property maintenance ordinances in the lettering and those sorts of things, so I mean, it has a lot of problems here, I suppose.
Is is somebody, is somebody violating those ordinances?
We don't have any open property maintenance cases downtown, I don't think. May have a little bit of it's a little I don't think we have any property maintenance.
Well, that's the problem. Nobody's signing these letters, their own name when they send these out. They're just putting it on city letterhead and you get these things and nobody takes responsibility for what they're sending out. I think somebody should be signing their name to all this stuff.
Well, I will say this, if somebody asks you, then I would direct them to call the mayor. But we, I mean, whoever, I'm not disagreeing with that part, but at this point, you don't know, then just have them call the mayor. And if you got somebody complaining, I'd have them call.
Because somebody could get this and think this, the council initiated this because it's city of Bucyrus.
That was how I got asked. I did tell them to call the mayor. I don't know if they did or not.
If everybody got a letter like this, that's just harassing the businesses around town.
Can be looked at that way.
Well, if there's no property maintenance, Rob, if there was no property maintenance complaints, which you said there wasn't none on any of the downtown businesses, then why did the letter get sent?
I I did send the letter out.
You did send this letter?
I did.
And I imagine we could walk down through downtown and probably find a couple property maintenance issues as well. Healing pain on building.
Okay, we're going to move on. If there's no other discussion at this time, I'm going to adjourn at seven fifty-six. Any public participation? Okay, and I am asking for a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. I'll adjourn at seven fifty-seven.
And at seven fifty-seven, I'll call the ad hoc, special ad hoc committee on council rules and procedures in order. Members present are C. Aaron Cherick, Mark McKeever, myself, Chair, noted that Bruce Truca is absent. Item one, ad hoc committee on council rules and procedure, call a special meeting for Thursday, September three, twenty twenty, to begin at the conclusion of the Bucyrus City Joint Regular Committee meeting for the limited purposes of amending and approving the minutes for the committee's meeting in July nine, twenty twenty. In your packet you had before you those minutes with changes, one in red and another in blue. Mr. Hill, did you have any comment, if you want to explain the color coding and all that or?
This is stemming from the conversation that we had on Tuesday evening, the law director and the council president and myself and Mr. Sean and everyone else here. We amended the minutes from July nine, I'm thinking maybe two weeks ago, well, no, on eight-two, I'm sorry, eight-twenty. There's a typo here in the red. It should say eight-twenty-twenty, not eight-two-twenty, not, yeah, so that should, the amendment in red is eight-twenty-twenty. Eight-twenty-twenty-twenty, sorry. The, this is a draft document here. The amendment in blue, I'm hoping reflects what we talked about at the meeting on Tuesday. This is out of the conversation that Rob had and that you mentioned as well. So it's up to you whether you want to amend it as written or change it.
So as written, basically, we put Allseth's name back in, she did make the second, and then note that she's not on the committee and going forward and so forth as written there, which is what we discussed the other night, that for clarity purposes, because Allseth did make the motion, that is reflected here and then it's reflected subsequently that it was pointed out she was not on the committee.
And also, as the law director said, the discussion we had will be reflected in the minutes from from Tuesday as well, for that being.
Vicki, do you have any comment?
Yes.
Go ahead. Before we get too in deep into it, let's, I'll hear Jim say.
Vicki DeSean, eleven oh eight Hill Crest Drive. Todd or poor kill already coined out the one typo error that I noticed on the thirteenth line under number two, eight-two, twenty-twenty, should say eight-twenty-twenty-twenty. Also on page two of two, number three, line two, also states eight-two, twenty-twenty amendment, and that should state eight-twenty, twenty-twenty amendment. Other than that, everything looks fine to me.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes with the two changes changing the date from eight-two to eight-twenty?
So
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that motion carries. I will now ask for a motion to adjourn the special ad hoc committee meeting.
Motion to adjourn at this second.
I have a motion from Mr. McKeever, second from Ms. Cherick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Ad hoc committee stands adjourned. If somebody sees Mr. Wagner, tell them I believe you. Okay. And you two probably, I need to talk to both of you for thirty seconds.
For a minute.